Good evening and welcome. Tonight is Monday, July 14th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Minnetoka City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Remaley.
Here.
Coakley.
Here.
Foster Bolton.
Here.
Shaq.
Here.
Wilburn.
Here.
Calvert.
Here.
Weersum.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda, and I believe there's an addenda. Mr. Funk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. There is an addenda for your consideration this evening. It is in relation to item 14A, Forma Noel, at 14705 Glendale Road. There's two parts to this addenda. First, the applicant submitted a supplemental document regarding subdivisions within the neighborhood after the staff report was posted last week. That is attached in your addenda. And then the second item for this agenda item is relates to the resolution. So there are two resolutions presented in your packet. One is a resolution for approval. The other is a resolution for denial. The resolution for approval, staff is recommending the addition of the item noted in front of you, which is related to on page seven, and a condition under the heading "Building Permit Dash Before Issuance of All Permits." Underlined in your addenda is the condition that houses built on each property are limited floor area ratio of .22 as defined by the zoning ordinance. And for your reference, City Council, this ensures compliance with the floor area ratio, which is, we often call the McMansion policy. The FAR, again, floor area ratio of .22 would restrict the homes on each lot to roughly 4,450 square foot. And again, that would come into play if you approve the variance application here this evening. So with that, Mayor and Council, you have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Councilor Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the agenda as amended.
And a second, Councilmember Foster Bolton.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Remaley.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes, and we have four different sets of minutes. We have the May 12th, 2025 study session minutes. We've got the May 19th, 2025 special study session minutes, then the June 16th, 2025 study session minutes, and the June 23rd, 2025 regular meeting minutes. I think we can do those all in one motion. Councilor Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the May 12th, 2025 study session minutes, the May 19th, 2025 special study session minutes, the June 16th, 2025 study session minutes, and the June 23rd, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Shaq. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Remaley.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Item six is special matters, and we have one special matter tonight, and that is a proclamation for Disability Pride Month. And disability issues are pretty close to my heart, so I've offered to read that proclamation tonight. So this is City of Minnetoka Proclamation Disability Pride Month, July 1 through 31, 2025. Whereas Disability Pride Month is observed annually in July to commemorate the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, ADA, which prohibits discrimination, sets standards of accessibility in public accommodation, and is widely regarded as one of the most important civil rights laws of our history. And whereas disability makes up a significant and multifaceted element of human diversity, one in four Americans nationwide, and more than 1 billion people globally, identify as people with disabilities. And whereas people with disabilities have historically faced and continue to face isolation, discrimination, violence, and harassment, which is often compounded by intersecting elements of identities such as race, gender, class, orientation, religion, language, immigration, status, and education. And whereas people with disabilities have been and continue to be active and resilient advocates for their own communities and needs, along with the support of their allies, and whereas the City of Minnetoka strives to create a community free from systematic from systemic discrimination and interpersonal prejudice, and built upon equity through its laws, policies, actions, employees, and commissions, while also acknowledging and celebrating culture, community, and the ADA as is only a starting point. And there remains significant progress to be made in ensuring a truly equitable, accessible, and inclusive communities for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the Minnetoka City Council does hereby declare the month of July as Disability Pride Month in the City of Minnetoka. Signed, Brad Weersum, Mayor. So thank you for that, and yeah, if you know anyone with disabilities, please acknowledge them and demonstrate appreciation. And if you're looking to hire people, please consider people with disabilities, because those people have so much to offer in our community. And it is harder, if you have a disability, it is harder to find a job. There's just no two ways about it. So anything we can do to help solve that problem, I would like to encourage people to consider that. So next is reports from city manager and council members, so I'll turn that first to Mr. Funk.
Thank you again, Mayor. Good evening again, Council. Couple things for you this evening. First, a congratulations to Public Works, Will Manchester and our team on receiving a grant in the amount of $277,215 for the tree planting program. This was submitted through the Met Council. Met Council received 31 applications, totaling more than $5 million in requests. Minnetoka received the second most funding out of that applicant pool, and many jurisdictions were not awarded funds, so congratulations to Mr. Manchester, our team, for continuing with our grant tree planting program. Night to Unite, it's hard to believe, I know summer is cruising past fast, more than we want, but Tuesday, August 5th, which is around the corner, is our Night to Unite event. Just want to remind Council of that evening, and then also to our residents to sign up for your neighborhood parties. Last year, there were more than 140 parties. We're hoping to surpass that this year. Again, registration is up online, and there's another week for registrations. Of course, we'll take them if they go a little bit more than next week, but certainly encourage anyone that's listening to go ahead and get your neighborhoods registered. Another thing I want to just mention is with our zoning rewrite, we have Ms. Wischnack and our community development team and our project team on that, leading that project. Minnetoka property owners are currently invited to share in that survey. If you can go out to Minnetoka Matters for residents to share their feedback, that's been up and live. We've had, I think, over, as this last week, 150 comments on Minnetoka Matters, so we can encourage residents to get engaged with that survey. Then last, I want to mention Summerfest, which was just here a few weeks ago on June 28th. We have estimated over 6,000 participants that day, as we all know, is a beautiful weather, the largest in seven years by our estimates. So good, and congratulations to the community, and especially to our staff, Mr. O'Day, Kelly Westy, and numerous other staff members that helped pull that together, and council members as well. Thank you for helping hand out medals to some of our winners, so that was exciting. And we had such an amazing crowd, and everything, as you know, came together really well. Events like this don't happen without a lot of planning and a lot of coordination, so really great credit to the city for that wonderful event. So with that, Mayor and Council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Councilmembers, anything that you would like to report? Councilor Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. Mostly just want to echo, thanks for the community coming out for Summerfest. It was a blast. Sometimes I have a conflict and I can't make it, but I was so glad to be there this year, and handing out the medals was absolute highlight. So really cool also to see all the engagement with community development on the zoning piece, and I think it helped because it started to rain just a couple of times, and I think that drove people to the tent, so that it didn't rain too much, it just worked out. So we got some, I think, good feedback. Thanks to all the hard work too, staff put into making that such a success.
Thank you, Councilor Shaq. Councilor Calvert.
Yeah, same, same. The kids couldn't have been cuter in the little top trot, and it also was kind of blazing hot, and I just want to thank staff for putting on an amazing, incredibly well-attended event in, you know, semi-uncooperative weather. The heat and the wet doesn't make it fun, but they made it a fun event anyway. And I just wanted to mention that our former city clerk, who ended up working in the Secretary of State's office, running elections for the entire state, has his retirement party today. So best wishes to David Maeda, who was really just such a wonderful staff member, and I remember crying when we said goodbye. And congratulations to Public Works and Mr. Manchester for that incredible grant. That's what we like, and happy disability pride to everybody.
Take it, Councilor Calvert. Anyone else? Councilwoman Remaley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just regarding Summerfest, I also wanted to thank our public service officers, they were there and were there to ask questions. They're also there to show off some new EV fleet vehicles, which was really exciting. And also, we had some volunteers that showed their own EV vehicles, and it was really interesting. And I think a lot of people showed a lot of interest, which was encouraging on that regard. And then also, I'm sure maybe some of the other council members will follow up as well, but the Juneteenth celebration was fantastic. The music was great, the vendors were great, the people were great, and just want to send a shout out to Jace Alexander, our staff member, who did so much work putting that together.
Thank you, Councilwoman Remaley. Anyone else? You know, the, I'm just going to add, I'm just going to pile on a little bit regarding Summerfest, because it was very well attended. The fireworks were great, the band was great. I think everyone was really having a great time. But one of the things, I get to introduce the band, and I get to say a few words, and one of the things that I wanted to point out is, you know, Summerfest, I mean, all cities have different festivals in the summer, and Summerfest is our big event. And we celebrate really three things at that event, and that is clearly, it's not, we don't do Fourth of July fireworks, we do Summerfest fireworks, so a week before the Fourth of July. But also, it's, Juneteenth is a new holiday, but it is a holiday that definitely deserves extra attention. And, you know, that's June 19th of 1865, when in Galveston, Texas, the last of the slaves were freed. And what a, what a, what a great event to commemorate, a change in American history. So I'm proud that we do that. And then it's Pride Month. And just as is the case with people with disabilities, we want our LGBTQ community to know that they're appreciated and welcomed in our city, and that they, we salute their pride and their identity. And I think it's really great that through our work, that we are identifying more groups that individually, because people who don't have celebrations or are not recognized in their community do feel isolated, and we have to recognize that and reach out. And so we talk about community inclusiveness, and to me, it's very important that we let all of these groups and all of these individuals know that they are welcome and appreciated in our community, and let's celebrate the events that are important to them and make them important to all of us. So I'm really proud of what we do in that context, and Summerfest is our summer event. So anyway, it was a great event, and staff, thank you for a lot of hard work. It was really well done. So with that, that takes us to the next item, citizens wishing discussed matters not on the agenda. So this is an open mic opportunity. If there's something that you would like us to know, please come forward, state your name and, come to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what you want us to hear. This is again for items that are not on the agenda. Items on the agenda will be handled separately as we come up to them. But it's also a matter that there will be no action taken tonight. We will hear what you have to say, then we will refer to staff to have them follow up. So if there's anything you'd like, just come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you want us to hear.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Donald Hannon. I live at 14201 Glen Ridge Road in Minnetoka, and there since 1952, when this was a village. And I enjoy the way things have developed. But I got two questions. Can I ask questions?
Well, we're not, we won't answer them, but you can ask them.
How many people have been to Target on 101, driving there in and out?
Okay.
Do I get to raise the hands or not?
Pardon? Well, no, we're not going to, we don't do that. You just tell us what you want us to know, and then, what's your point about Target?
Nothing.
Okay.
So my point is across the street at the entrance to Cub. So Cub was built in the early 80s, along with excavation of 101, which was a swamp. And so they call it mucking, and they were mucking out 101, and they asked the Cub people and other people from the city, what do we do with this entrance? Do we muck it out? Mucking is expensive, it has to be paid by somebody. And everybody declined to muck it out. Now, if you drive in and out today, it drives like this. Mr. Manchester has maybe been in and out of there, and to me, it's an illegal street, because the grades are too steep. I have myself personally had a accident with my car, where I glided into a pickup with a trailer hitch sticking out for a bolt, and he rammed it right through my plastic bumper. So there's at least one accident, I think there's hardly been more. So to me, the street needs to be addressed and bring up to, so it looks like the entrance to Target across the street, a level playing field.
Okay, yep. So that's, that's on the, so just to be clear, that is where there's that dip, you go into, yeah, the dip goes down and comes back up because they never...
And it's been settling every year because there's muck under there.
Okay, all right.
And it never was excavated. So it's not going to be a cheap fix.
Well, but we do a lot of fixes that aren't cheap, so...
No, I understand.
So we'll make sure that Mr. Manchester knows our thoughts on that, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day. Is there anyone else who has a comment for the council? Good evening.
Hi there. I'm Ellen Cousins, 4531 Greenwood Drive, and I've been a resident of Minnetoka for over 35 years. I've been a commissioner in the city, and I have been very active in the city, as many of you know. This year, we are getting ready for elections, and as you know, we are using ranked choice voting. I am here to make sure, number one, I want to make, I want to say thank you for finally putting this in the Minnetoka memo, that there is going to be an election. I've been watching for it, waiting for it. So I'm glad that that is in here. However, the website is very hard to find, where you get your candidate information. And so I want to make sure that our website gets updated, so that people know immediately how to get our information on how to run and what the deadlines are. Right now, you have to go to the homepage, then you go to the elections, then you go to candidate information, and then you finally go to how do I become a candidate? That to me is not transparent, and I think it needs to be more transparent. As all of you know, we're ranked choice voting, so anybody who is eligible can and should run for mayor and the two at-large positions. All it takes is for you to be eligible to vote in Minnesota, at least 21 years old, not running for another election in this year, and be a resident 30 days before election. So if you want to be a Minnetoka mayor or at-large member, you can still come in, establish residency, and then run for that, file for that office. So I am encouraging everyone to do that, and as a $5 fee, so it's not out of reach for anyone, and that's all you have to do. It's very easy, and I hope to see a lot of people running this year, because as you know, we need very intelligent and viable candidates for our city, because this city deserves high-quality candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cousins. Is there anyone else who has something you'd like the council to hear tonight? Is there anyone?
What up, Council? My name is Jonathan Kent, 14513 Moonlight Hill Road, and I have two quick items. One, I was at the garden club meeting for the first time, very cool group, and just as more of an FYI, and speaking on behalf of someone, I'm not sure if they would otherwise convey this, really almost in passing, they were mentioning, no, they shared it with the group, that T-Mobile has, as you may be aware, been in the area, looking to sign up people, and they've been adding to like the fiber optics, making internet faster, which I actually think is overall a good thing. And then this resident mentioned that unfortunately, her garden was trampled, so that was just a bit distressing, and I figured this is actually a pretty decent forum to at least share that, and if nothing else, rest in peace to her flowers and such. So, and by the way, that group is pretty, pretty fun, and I plan on going back in the future. Second item is very unrelated, and to kind of take a zoom out on a more international level, and admittedly, this is not something that I am aware of whether and how the City of Minnetoka has been involved from a city finance perspective, all the way to issuing statements or proclamations. But, you know, there are many, many affairs happening in the world. I was pleased to hear about mention of the floods, so much that's happening domestically, locally. And then it would be remiss, I just, it doesn't, I personally, it doesn't get said enough, there's people who are trying, but what is happening over in Palestine, it is a genocide. I think that our city ought to say more about that, and I'll be the first to say, I realize that it's a, it's not even a complex matter, actually. If you look at what is actually factually happening, it's not complicated at all. I know that it's a fraught history. I grew up with many friends of faith on both sides, if you will, and so I'm not here to try to make an inflammatory statement regarding any party involved over there. Also, I realize it is a conflict that's far away, and the reality is that, you know, not that long ago, and affecting a different group of people, we did have a Holocaust go on, people didn't do enough, and millions died. And so maybe the scale isn't quite there, but people are dying, Gazans specifically, Palestinians, by, in the thousands. This is stuff that may make people feel uncomfortable, but I have to say it, and more people need to say it. I wish some of you would say it, say it every time, say Free Palestine, where, where stuff that, and by the way, the folks who, you know, Hamas committing the attacks on October 7th, that's awful too. I'm a big believer in nonviolence, I think most of the people over there as well. And, you know, so it's not okay that there are hostages, those, they need to be returned, there should be peace. You know, there was a slaughter of over 1,000 Israelis, that's really messed up, that's horrible, it's horrifying. Imagining that happening, I've been to a number of music festivals where a large number of people were kidnapped and killed. If that ever happened anywhere here, it would, it would be mortifying. So I guess my point on a practical level, to, because this can go on and on, is Gazans specifically are dying by the tens, hundreds, and thousands. Conservative estimates, over 50,000, overwhelming number are women and children. This is, and if you look, just Google, read any set of news sources that are at all reputable. You talk to historians, I'm a history major myself, you talk to historians who study the Holocaust, they are calling this a genocide, and they are Israeli historians, okay? So I'm not saying they are authority on the matter, you have, there's a reason that people from Northern Ireland are very passionate about this matter, they know a thing or two from the troubles about what happens when there's ongoing conflict. People in South Africa, they know a thing or two about apartheid, and they have been leading the charge on the international level. There's a reason that Benjamin Netanyahu and Yoav Galant have arrest warrants out for them. And I think we need to, you know, there's a lot going on about discussions on sanctuary cities. If anything, I wish I could just dedicate a whole other thing to that, maybe I'll come next time and do that, or someone else can, but it's just, it's, these things, what happens there is a reflection of the moral character of our world, and I think it's really messed up. And there's far, far too much pressure of people saying, if you speak up on this matter, if you are pro-Palestine, if you are critical of the current administration and leadership of Netanyahu, if you're critical of the IDF, which many call, I think correctly, the IOF, they are an occupation force, they are illegally occupying the West Bank, that's a, that's a whole other issue. But it is not anti-Semitic. There are, there's a lot of antisemitism out there, I don't condone that, I think that's a real problem. There's a lot of Islamophobia out there, there's a lot of, within our state, there's plenty of mosques that get attacked, as there are temples that do. So all of it is bad. So this is not about that. I've been called anti-Semitic before, I prepare to hear that again in some, to some extent, for raising this. And to me, it's just like, you know, if I, I have directly contacted people through WhatsApp and Instagram, who are begging for money just for food. They don't even want this, they do want the conflict to stop, but they're just trying to live hour to hour. And their big message is, why isn't, why aren't more people talking about this, why aren't they doing more? So I realize there really isn't a whole lot, probably on a practical level, the City of Minnetoka can do. My call to action would be, however our finances are tied to the Israeli government, look at divestment, you know, look at boycott. I mean, this is, this is what essentially stopped, if you know your history, I'm not trying to preach, and I'm sure you do, this is what stopped apartheid in South Africa. And this is also rooted in the civil rights movement, where people stopped, started those bus boycotts, when they started, you know, going down south, the Freedom Riders and all that, that March on Washington, and people are out in droves, but I just, I don't think the powers that be are really serious enough about this matter, and there's a lot of denial. And people are dying. So as long as not enough is done, this slaughter will continue, it is a genocide. And so I guess to tie it up, the divestment piece of it, and then I personally, if it hasn't happened already, if I'm mistaken in seeing anything that has been publicly said or committed to by this council, but I would love for there to be some kind of resolution or commitment to say, we oppose, and it's crazy to even have to do this, but we oppose genocide in any sense of it. You can, you can, you can highlight historically the other parallels and say, it is, it's enough, like knock it off, stop. We do not accept that, and that's where we draw the line. Have that in the historical record, because I can guarantee you one thing, well, it's not a guarantee, but it's my prediction, in 1,000 years... not a guarantee, but it's my prediction, in 1,000 years, assuming we're not, you know, too far away from the sun or whatever, or something else happens to this planet, like, they, the history will look at this, and it's going to be the same, "Why didn't we do more? Why, why did so many people get slaughtered?" And just as a reminder, if you look today, Israel shot and killed at least six children trying to get water. Okay? Before that, there were bombs dropped, another 50 people killed. This is, and this is in a context of a ceasefire. So, and I have been to talks, I'll wrap it up, I've been to talks where there have been people overseas, doctors, folks who, you talk to Doctors Without Borders, nurses, and they will describe, and I won't get into the details, but it is super disturbing, the wounds and ways in which children, women, elderly have been killed via gunfire, and those are, that is deliberate action right there. When a sniper bullet hits certain areas of the body, there is no mistaking the intent of that. So, and when, when there is claim of the IDF being the most moral army in the war, I call BS. I think that is, that is, that is, it's anything but. So anyway, thank you for listening. Sorry to take up so much time, and free Palestine.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Is there anyone else who would like to share something with the council? All right, I'm gonna, I'm not seeing anyone, so we will move on. Next item is bids and purchases. We have no bids and purchases, purchases tonight. So that takes us to the consent agenda. And there are four consent agenda items, and consent agenda items are items that are typically routine. So we read them into the record, and we vote on them with one motion and one vote. If, if someone would like to pull an item, whether that's a council member or someone in the audience, and you would like an item considered more deeply than it would be as a consent agenda item, raise your hand and indicate that. We will pull that item. We will then vote for the remaining, on the remaining issues, and then we will circle back to the item or items that have been pulled. So, item 10A is a resolution for the Groveland Storm Sewer Improvements Phase 1 Project. Item 10B is the Metro Transit Contract Extension. Item 10C is Pathways to Home Ownership. Item 10D is an interim use permit for a portable classroom at Glen Lake Elementary School at 4801 Woodridge Road. And item 10E is a nuisance abatement agreement for 12001 Hillaway Road West. Would anyone like to pull any of those? Councilmember Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't necessarily need to pull it, but I just wanted to make a comment about 10B. And I would be happy to make the motion on the other items as well.
All right. If you would, why don't, why do we, why don't, we'll take your motion, and then we'll circle back.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 10A, B, C, D, and E.
Is there a second? Councilmember Romaili?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. So we got a motion, a second. Before we vote, why don't you make your comment, and then we'll, we'll get it all done with all of the information in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Just regarding the Metro Transit Contract Extension, I think, you know, we've been talking about this this year, and with the work, the consultant work that was done, I think we all acknowledge that we're not receiving the service necessarily that would be optimal for the city. And there's some changes coming, and I, and I'm really optimistic about that. I was very appreciative in the staff report, the reference to, in the future, considering alternatives such as partial contracts, maybe with Metro Transit and other providers. I just would note that as a part of the 494 Corridor Commission, we talk a lot about transportation, and, you know, we get some updates from Southwest Transit, and I will say, they've got some really cool things going on. And not to say that we would, that that's even necessarily an option, but I think there's some aspiration there when we look at some of what they're able to provide in the city of Eden Prairie and beyond. So I was appreciative of staff acknowledging that there are other options going forward, and that we're never going to take our eye off the ball there.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. And before we vote, any other comments on, on this item? All right, then, Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Romaili?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is consent agenda items requiring five votes, and there are none of those. So then, oop, excuse me, there is. I stand corrected, I had to turn the page. There is one, excuse me. There's not on, there's not on page one, but there is one on page two. So, so item 11, item 11A, and again, I will read this into the record. If there's any questions, or if anyone would like to pull it, please let me know. A CIP Amendment for Major Equipment Purchase. So, Councilmember Calvert?
Yeah, I'm going to make Mr. Manchester happy and move approval of item 11A.
Is there a second? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I second.
Very good. And I'm confident Mr. Manchester was prepared, if you, if you had a question for him, but, but having, since there were none, Ms. Larson, would you please call roll? We have a motion by Councilmember Calvert, and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton.
Romaili?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 12 is Introduction of Ordnances, and 12A is Items Concerning Marsh Run 3, a rental apartment development at 11-800 Wayzata Boulevard. And Ms. Thomas, I believe that is your report.
Thank you, Mayor. We're some council members, you're certainly familiar. Oh. Going to go back to that slide, I apologize. Miscommunication between Ms. Wischnack and myself. The council is familiar with this property. You'll recall that back in 2024, you reviewed and commented on a concept plan by Inland Development Partners. That concept suggested removal of the existing office building that was built in the mid-1980s, and construction of 26 three-story rental townhomes divided between four buildings on the site. And then earlier this year, you introduced a rezoning ordinance associated with the formal development proposal for the site, which again was for rental townhome units, 25, just kind of a reallocation of those units between four buildings. Based on the council comments at that ordinance introduction, staff comments before and after that meeting, the applicant did choose to pause their application and reevaluate. And so an entirely new development proposal was submitted last month before you hear this evening. It again calls for removal of the existing office building and construction of a four-story, 44-unit apartment building. The first floor of the building would be enclosed parking and a leasing office, and then three stories of rental units above. This revised proposal does not include a rezoning request. So in other words, this proposal will be reviewed and evaluated by staff under the standards of the PID zoning that currently exists on the site. The proposal does require a master development plan approval. Master development plans are required by ordinance for any redevelopment that occurs within the I-394 zoning district. It requires a floodplain alteration permit for some fill and then recreation of floodplain on the site, and that's 100-year floodplain, not FEMA floodplain. And then finally, site and building plan review with expansion permits and variances. Site and building plan review is required for any multi-unit development. And the expansion permits and variances, as you see on your screen, are to wetland and floodplain setback. These are expansion permits because the proposal does not meet the code requirement, but it is an improvement over existing conditions. And then the variances are front yard setback and floor area ratio. I would point out, and this may be a little bit difficult to read, but this shows the original townhome concept, or the application that came in back in March, and now this apartment proposal. The setbacks for the proposed apartment building are greater than those that were suggested under the townhome concept. And similarly, the impervious surface percentage on the site and the floor area ratio are lower under this apartment plan than they were under the rental townhomes. And this will certainly, information will be included when this project goes to the Planning Commission, if you choose to refer it to them, and will include it again in your staff report. Master development plans can only be adopted by ordinance, which is why we're here this evening, to ask you to introduce that ordinance and pass along any comments or requests to the Planning Commission for their consideration during their review of the proposal. Now I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Wischnack, but hopefully find the right side. Here we go.
Perfect, perfect. Just an update for you on the EDAC's feedback on the affordability. So they did discuss it at their May 28 meeting, and in that document, their packet, it was to provide 20% of the units at 50% of the area median income. That would be nine units total, and then on the bottom, you can see the mix of units. So five one-bedrooms, and then four two-bedrooms, and you can see the difference in rent on the right-hand side of the screen. You can see the market rent for a one-bedroom would be 1,823 normally, a 50% unit would be at 1,241. And then on the two-bedroom, a market unit would be 2,600 approximately, and then that moves down to 1,500 with a 50% area median income. They do, they are requesting 850,000 of assistance. We will go through the normal analysis of that with the EDAC this week. On Thursday, we'll do the final review of their financial requests. We'll come back to you with a recommendation from the EDAC, as well as our financial analyst at Ellers. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you if you have any questions. And this is the recommendation.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. Council, we've, we're familiar with this property. Any questions for staff based on what was presented? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that I've been seeing in my email, kind of observing from a distance a little bit, that there was conversation about, and a request, at least by the neighborhood, for a neighborhood meeting. Is that, that didn't happen, is that right?
Mayor Weersum and Councilmember Shaq, city staff did not require the developer to hold a neighborhood meeting on this particular project. Staff has indicated to neighbors that they're welcome to contact the developer. We've also indicated to area residents that we, as city staff, would be happy to sit down with a one or a group of neighbors. To date, we haven't had anyone reach out directly, asking some questions via email, but not asking for a sit-down meeting.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is just an introduction of ordinance, but I did get an email about, and I've been looking at setbacks, as described in the packet. So the packet, the information from the developer says that there are other precedents along Fairfield Road where the setback is only 30 feet, just as they're asking for here. And I, I didn't, I didn't get out my ruler and go over there this weekend, so I'm just wondering if we can get information about that. And there have been a lot of, not a lot, but a few questions about parking at Marsh Run 2, and my, already, and in my understanding of what's being proposed here, so it's 44 units, there are 44 parking stalls underground, and 20-something surface, surface spots. And so I just get a little concerned, and I told Mr. Funk today, I forget how many sort of required, it's in like the 1.5-ish range for required parking stalls per, per unit, and I couldn't remember, but I just feel like we're flirting with being underparked again there. So I was just wondering, what's the requirement?
Mayor Weersum and Councilmember Calvert, the requirement under the new parking ordinance is one parking stall per bedroom, and then an additional visitor parking 10% of the unit. So in this case, 70 parking stalls would be required, that is for the units themselves plus visitor parking. So this proposal would meet the parking ordinance.
Okay.
Other questions, council? Is there, is there, did the applicant make any presentation or have any comments? If they would, we'd take those, and then we'll, then we'll discuss it as a council a little bit. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Tom Dillon from Inland Development Partners at 100 West Lake Street up in Wayzata. Thank you for, your mics are kind of tall, or maybe it's my height, I'm not sure. Thank you for letting us make another presentation, too. I think staff has done a great job in outlining what we have submitted on this. What I would like to say is, we've worked very, very hard with the staff on multiple variations of the site, and I think we've come up with a plan that has the staff's report, support, it has our, our support as well. The one thing this property is constrained with is the size of the property and the setbacks based on the zoning district. The setbacks for this district are, are significant because they're related to larger properties. I think it's a three-acre minimum in this zoning district. This property just assumed that one that was changed. So we have done the best we can. We have made, because if you applied those, you'd have a little sliver of land that you can develop that you really couldn't do anything with. So, so through all these different variations of what we've done, I think we've come up with the best plan. And this is the third and final phase of the developments that you've already seen go up in the Marsh Run area. On the parking issue, we do have 1.6 stalls per unit, which as staff has said, we meet that. We do provide the nine affordable units, which is a very good thing for the city. And we're here for any questions that you have, timeline. If, if we get through the approval process, we could start this fall or in the spring, about a 12- to 14-month construction period. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Questions? Councilmember Romaili?
I'll turn on. Thank you. I have a couple of questions staff and/or yourself perhaps can answer. First of all, what are we talking about in terms of our period of affordability for these units? Are we 30 years?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Wischnack.
Thank you. Councilmembers, it is a 30-year term, as always.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
And then the financing request, is that via a TIF, or how, what? I wasn't sure. I wanted, if I was remembering correctly.
Yeah, the Mayor and Councilmember Romaili, there's tax increment financing involved, yes, with the project.
Great. I think that's it for right now. Thanks.
Other questions? You know, mine has a little bit to do with, with financing, just because I know that the financing environment is challenging. Interest rates are not as low as we, as people got used to. They're, they're still not horrible in a historical context, but they are a lot higher than they were. And, you know, a 44-unit apartment building, we don't do a lot of those, but we did approve one about that size in Glen Lake some time ago, and that approval remains open, but that particular developer has been, as we understand it, unable to secure financing to get that, that property built. And so I'm just wondering, you know, wondering about the financing, and are, is that, is that a concern, or because you're working with DORN and larger entities, or perhaps, I mean, I know every developer situation's different than creditworthiness and all of those sorts of things, but if you could maybe give us a little peek under the tent in terms of, you know, how you're finding the financing for this particular project, because it is so similar to one that- that has had challenges with that in the city.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd be happy to answer that question. First of all, we actually, the Glen Lake project, we actually looked at that. It had that under contract before, I think it's Mr. Abdo that has the project.
Yes.
And then we, since then, we did look at his design because he was willing to sell it. And you're right, it, it just didn't make sense to us the way it was designed and laid out. On this project, you know, the project cost, the hard cost of this project is about $10 million, all-in costs about $13 million. We, we would structure that, along with the tax increment financing in connection with the affordable housing, we would blend that between a debt and equity piece, the capital stack, which you've probably heard before. And right now, in the marketplace, for this-sized deal with some of the local banks and the regional banks here, it's, it's actually not a bad time, if you can get the numbers to work. Interest rates are an issue. Hard costs for construction right now, if you can get a project going, they're actually, they have modulated, which means they're not increasing. Doesn't necessarily mean they're decreasing. It just means that the ride, the rapid rise has slowed down. And some, subcontractors are willing to narrow their profit margins on product, electrical plumbing, whatever trade you want to go to. On the equity side, that is still very challenging. There is a certain level of return you have to get on the equity in order to attract the equity into the project. But right now, because of the size of the, the capital structure and such, we have local investors that we've worked for 25, 30 years that we won't have any problem raising the equity, especially this-sized project and connected to the Vale and the Burke projects. You know, the track record is pretty impressive right in that area. So, I don't think we're going to have an issue. Of course, we have to get it done, but we've, we've had pretty strong interest right now.
Very good. Thank, thank you for that. That was very helpful.
Okay.
I think we're probably going to let you sit down, but one last time, counsel, any questions? All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, I think that means we get to bring it back to us, right? And talk about this project, any concerns or thoughts that we have. The motion is to introduce and refer to the Planning Commission. So, I think our real job is not to say, gee, we like it, we don't like it. Our real job is to say, okay, what do we want to learn about this project so we have the information that we can make when we make a decision after the Planning Commission acts? So, what things do we want the Planning Commission to discover for us so that when it comes back, we can make a good decision? Thoughts? Councilmember Calvert.
I don't, I don't want it to be something that ends up being like a non-starter, because as was pointed out in the presentation, the setbacks are an improvement over the townhome proposal and, in some cases, the existing building. But I do, I do want to explore the setbacks. I do want to understand sort of how they fit with other setbacks on the east side, so along Fairfield Road, because there's been a claim that, you know, a lot of the properties only have a 30-foot setback. And if it really is just sort of the norm, then maybe it's okay. And whoo, so, this is just land use. I know that there's been some discussion of sort of cost per unit. I, I was coaching the EDAC and sort of, you know, numbers on other projects, because we have some new, really new EDAC members. But I just think, I think setbacks and that's probably my biggest concern.
All right. Thank you. Other comments, counsel? Councilmember Meili.
Thank you, Mayor. Building on that, yeah, again, I guess I would be interested in having the Planning Commission looking at the variance issues and basically how they compare to other developments in the neighborhood. It looks like it's a lot closer than, you know, the previous proposals have been, so glad to see that. Little concerned about the wetland setback, but, you know, just making sure that we're being responsible and sustainable in, in terms of that. And again, looking at what other developments have, have achieved or are, what their comparable setbacks are would be helpful. Glad to see that there's more green space in this proposal. I would like to obviously hear more about any efficiency and sustainability features, EV charging, kind of things like that. So, hoping that the Planning Commission can flesh that out a little bit. I know we have our standards, but to see if there's, you know, anything going above and beyond our, our standards is always welcome, or above and beyond state standards, I should say, is always welcome in terms of building efficiency and EV installation and so on and so forth. So, those are the things that I would like to, the Planning Commission to flesh out a bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things come to mind, and they're not, you know, I wouldn't ordinarily bring this up in an ordinance introduction, but because we didn't have this concept as a concept plan review, you know, I recall, and I, when I see this building, I think back to initial concepts of the Burke. And kind of one of the critiques at that time was just kind of the blockiness and the mass of it. And I see that here. I also recognize that there are some limitations because of site size, but that's not really our issue, you know? And it does kind of just look like a building plunked there in some of the images. And so, you know, I would appreciate kind of some discussion about that. The other thing that feels very unresolved, or maybe it's as resolved as it can be, but I don't feel satisfied with the response that we've gotten. And that is, you know, I do know for sure, because I've used it that way by, as a guest of somebody in the Burke, that Burke residents are using that parking lot as overflow parking. And, you know, that was a promise or a point made to us when we approved the Vale. Well, we have this other space and people can park here. And so, I would just like to hear about how, with all of this density added to this area over the course of the past five years, how does DORN, as a management company, plan to address, there is no overflow parking left? And so, if there is a parking problem, how is it going to be monitored and how is it going to be addressed? Because as the ward to councilmember, those parking problems come to me when, you know, people are parked up and down the street. And I don't want to monitor the parking. That's not my job, nor do I want to continue to do that. So, you know, I, I guess in, when it comes back to us, I'd like to hear a little bit about the plan of action for how these three buildings are going to operate under DORN management.
Thank you. Councilmember Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Shaq, because that's why I mentioned it before in my questions, because it's an ongoing, it's, it's a very serious ongoing issue. And parking and barking, as our city manager frequently says, they're the, some of the biggest problems.
Are there any other issues, really?
Exactly. Parking, parking. But, and I also, you know, this is something that is going to be developed and we, you know, need to be pragmatic about what might go there. And I appreciate your design comments as well, because that is something that people that visit me from other places frequently comment on, is sort of the lack of architectural interest in the apartment buildings that are going up in the Twin Cities metro area. So, I also appreciate that. I also just, I think there was an opportunity to be more comprehensive in that, on that corner, with the Burke and Marsh Run Two, or the Vale now, and now Marsh Run Three. I think there could have been a master development plan for the whole thing, gotten it all done, you know, at one time and not subjected the, the neighborhood to literally five or six years of constant construction. And so, no matter what goes there, I mean, you know, I just, my heart goes out to the neighborhood, because that's just a lot of disruption in, in construction. I really wish that it had unfolded a little bit more comprehensively at the beginning is because I think there, there is some sense that that's sort of what was going to happen anyway. And there was some, you know, people were saying, you know, that's not necessarily true, but it sure feels that way now. And it would have been great, I think there would have been a more, I think we wouldn't be talking about these setback issues if we'd been able to look at everything comprehensively. So, I just wish it had unfolded that way. And I, it's my one chance to say something, because if something like this comes before us again, I'm hoping we can sort of look at it more holistically.
Other comments, counsel? I'll make a few. You know, I think one of the questions that I will be grappling with and would like the Planning Commission to think about is, you know, the question I ask when we're confronted with something like this is, if not this, what? Because it's clear that, you know, you've got 1.9 acres on I-394, surrounded by housing. You know, there's a pretty high likelihood that it's going to be housing. The question is, you know, what should that housing look like? And we've, we've seen a couple of concepts right now. And, and I think that the, the layouts that we've seen are, are about as attractive as they can be with the constraints that this property has. But I'm a believer in let's dig for creativity. I mean, I know that, you know, when, when the Burke was considered, the Burke lowered part of the building and raised another part of the building because of concern, neighborhood concerns and things like that. And while this site is really constrained, if there is an opportunity to maybe bring a little bit of creativity, more creativity and less boxiness, if you will, I think we would benefit from that, because, you know, I do believe at some point, I don't know what it's going to be or who's going to get it, but there is going to be housing developed on this property. And I also believe that, you know, I'm encouraged by the financing circumstances, and it sounds like that, you know, with a, with a small, relatively small property like this, a small building like this, I'm encouraged that, you know, you can make the numbers work without having to do something really ridiculous. But, you know, are there things that we could tweak a little bit more and, and make it a little bit more creative and maybe, maybe mitigate a few of the concerns that we know that the neighbors have? But, but I, you know, I really think that, you know, if not this, what is the question that ultimately is going to determine what gets built here? And so, you know, I think this is a worthwhile and incredible perspective. And I can tell you that I've been at the Burke recently and, and I've parked in numerous places. I parked once in the parking lot of the future Marsh Run Three. I've parked in the guest parking in the front of the Burke, and I've also gone into the underground parking. And there are, there are spots available for that. And so, you know, I think, I think some of the, the parking issues, if people avail themselves to the alternatives, there are solutions there, but they need to be well communicated and intuitively obvious, I think. So, I think that's some consideration, too, that the Planning Commission should ask for, okay, how are you going to communicate your parking requirements and things like that? But because those are, those are some real factors that affect the livability of this neighborhood. But, you know, I'm, I mean, I think this is pretty straightforward, and I think it's a, I think it's a credible effort and, you know, but I want the, I want the Planning Commission to, you know, I think, challenge, challenge their thinking in terms of, are there things that, that we can do to make this better? You know, there's 44 units, it's not a ton of density, but I, I think, given where we are, it, I'm, you know, I think we can maybe play with a number of units upper-down a little bit, but I, I think we're hard-pressed to make any meaningful changes there and have a project work out. So, but I'd encourage the Planning Commission to just ask some of those hard questions and, and see where we net out before they make their recommendation. And clearly, they will, they will hold a public hearing so that the neighbors will, will be able to raise the issues of their concerns, too, at the Planning Commission. So, counsel, any last shots? Those are my rather lengthy comments. So, we need a motion to introduce this and refer to the Planning Commission. Would someone like to make that motion? Councilmember Wilburn. You've been very quiet tonight. Nice to hear from you.
Hi. I move introduction of the ordinance and referral to the Planning Commission.
Is there a second? Councilmember Meili.
I'll second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Meili. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Meili.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wiersem.
Yes, motion carries. Item 13 is public hearings. We have none of those tonight. And then item 14 is other business. And 14A is a preliminary plat with lot area variances for Forma Noel, a tool-lot subdivision at 14705 Glendale Road. And Ms. Thomas, that is your presentation.
Thank you again, counsel. This, just under one-acre property is located at the intersection of Glendale Road and Chastick Way and Eden Prairie Road. So, it's a property that we call a tri-frontage property. It has frontage on three different streets. A roughly 1,600-square-foot house was originally built on the property back in 1908. The current property owners are proposing to remove that existing home and divide the lot into two single dwelling lots. Though the lots would meet dimensions with regard to lot width, lot depth, and buildable area, the lots would not meet our ordinance requirement for total area of 22,000 square feet. And the lots would be further reduced in area should the project move forward by acquisition or dedication of some right-of-way along both County Road Four, which is Eden Prairie Road, and Chastick Way. Both city engineering and county engineering have noted that the rights-of-way along these streets is substandard. And so, they would be requesting, as we are able, under subdivision, to acquire that. This chart notes the different dimensional standards. The areas that are shown here are areas after dedication of the rights-of-way for Eden Prairie Road and Chastick Way. To accommodate the two new houses, some grading would occur. Generally, grade in the area of the proposed homes would be raised about one to three feet, and then grade between the homes would be cut or excavated to a similar extent. There are 50 trees on the site that are over four inches in diameter, and our natural resources staff have determined that 45 of those trees are covered by the tree protection ordinance, based on their size, their species, and their health. Construction of the homes, the drives, and then the grading needed to accommodate those would result in the removal of 12 high-priority trees and one significant tree out of those 45. This would meet the city's tree protection ordinance threshold, meaning the removal would be under those thresholds. The subdivision was considered by the Planning Commission on June 24. Staff recommended denial of the proposal, based specifically on the lot area variance and the finding that it did not meet the variance standard as outlined in state statute and city code, specifically that the variances would not be consistent with neighborhood character. Though some of the lots in the area are, what we would say, undersized or non-conforming, in staff's view, the majority of lots in the area do meet the standard. The commission discussed this project at length. They made two motions, the first to recommend denial of the proposal, the second to recommend approval. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, neither motion passed, so this is coming to you without a planning commission recommendation. Staff, we do continue to recommend denial based on those findings that were outlined in the written report and the denial resolution. Staff also prepared, and hopefully you saw, a resolution approving the subdivision if the council is so inclined this evening. As Mr. Funk noted, the change memo does include an additional condition of approval, should you approve it, to ensure that we're complying with the McMansion policy. I'll also note, the other item in the change memo includes information from the applicant indicating that several of the lots on Glendale Road, primarily those shown in red on the far right diagram here, are substandard and were created after adoption of the city's 22,000 square foot standard. The records that were provided certainly indicate that those lots were created, however, other than historical aerial photos and building permits from the 1970s, planning files don't indicate how they were created, other than we can obviously tell that they're here now. I would suggest that the fact that the lots were created 40 years ago by whatever mechanism would not alter staff's recommendation here this evening because, again, in our opinion, the majority of lots in the area do not meet the, or do meet, excuse me, the minimum lot size. So, with that, I would turn it back to the chair, excuse me, to the mayor and to the chair of this body.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Council, any questions based upon the staff report? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of questions and I ran them past Mr. Funk earlier today as well. So, I visited the property and, you know, I'm gratified to know that, that tree removal would be within ordinance. However, there are a lot of unhealthy trees that look like they're not going to make it anyway. And so, I'm just wondering, how are we calculating? I mean, how are we counting the trees? Because some of these trees don't look like they're going to be alive whether they're removed or not. So, that's, that's my first question. My second question has to do with the right-of-ways. So, I visited the property and my understanding was that there was also some additional right-of-way along Glendale. And, but that, that's not indicated here. So, I just wanted to make sure I'm really understanding, like, where it is and what the total sort of square footage is of the right-of-ways that were, rights-of-way that we are talking about.
Mayor Weersum and Councilmember Calvert, the right-of-way along Glendale, that dedication, it's a little bit difficult to see. Wrong mouse here. This area shows that dedication. That was already proposed as part of the plat. The additional right-of-way that the county and city engineers have indicated is needed is shown in a red here. So, if the council were to approve this proposal, the final plat would come back to the city and the lots would be a little bit smaller from the east side and the west side. The north side remains the same. The lot areas that are shown here on this chart are the resulting lots. So, the right-of-way, the red areas, has been taken out from these numbers. So, that gets to the, the rights-of-way. The second question about trees, there are 50 trees on the site. Our natural resources staff has evaluated those and determined that five would just not be counted due to whatever reason. I would say that when natural resources staff looks at health versus perhaps when an arborist looks at health, that's a, two different types of health. We're not looking for specimen type trees. So, a tree that is in fair health, we consider a good and viable tree. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, some, I mean, we have species, there's a lot of buckthorn going all around the property, so that's, you know, I'm assuming that's not really tree count. But there are four pine trees that look like they're not long for the world. I mean, they're, they're hanging in there but aren't looking like healthy. And there are several other large trees that just, the, the healthiest trees on the property are some black walnuts that are actually incredibly impressive. But there just look like there are a lot of trees that would likely not survive too many more years as it is. So, yeah, I just wasn't sure how we were sort of counting all the trees on that property because I think some of them will be gone whether we, they are removed for construction or not.
Other questions? Councilmember Coakley?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I have a question about the zoning. If our zoning had already changed, do you think this would be a conversation that we would be having?
Chair Weersum and Commissioner, I am so sorry, I will sooner or later remember to call you councilmembers.
You've got planning commission on your mind, Ms. Thomas.
I do. I'm writing planning commission reports this week. Councilmember Coakley, the zoning ordinance update, as you know, is underway. One of the things that's being considered and one of the questions that we're asking both at the Summer Fest and in the phone survey that will be conducted this month is about lot size, where that ends up and what that lot size is or if there is a change. I think staff is, we don't know where that may lead, but it is a question that we have and that's being asked.
Councilmember Coakley?
One more question. And so, the lots are a little bit bigger than what the area needs for that area. And so, and so, is the, the problem is that the lot is, the two houses is too big for the lot? Is that what we're having?
Councilmember Coakley?
For the split, rather, for the split.
Specifically, the, the requirement in the current subdivision and zoning ordinances states that newly created lots have to be 22,000 square feet in size. And each of these would be just over 20,000 square feet. So, it's this column and these numbers that the variance is required for and really the reason that this is at issue this evening.
That's all the questions I have.
Any other? Councilmember Romailly?
Thank you, mayor. I guess maybe you could help me understand a little bit of the, what, what we're looking at in terms of maximum house size based on a single lot versus the potentially subdivided lot? I know you're talking about the McMansion policy. I think it would help all of us to kind of understand, or at least me.
Mayor Weersum and councilmembers, the McMansion policy or the floor area ratio policy applies only when a lot or a home is requesting a variance. It's at that time that the city can choose to put a cap, so to speak, on, on the square footage that can be built on a lot. And what we as staff do is we run the floor area ratio for all of the properties within 400 feet and 1,000 feet on an adjacent road. So, these properties that you see on the right-hand diagram here, we look at what is the total square footage of those homes divided by the lot area to establish a maximum floor area ratio and then apply that to the, the variance that's being requested. So, in this case, each of these lots is, I rounded to roughly 20,400 square feet, applying a .22, which is the maximum floor area ratio that already exists in the neighborhood, we get a resulting 4,000, I apologize, I don't have the change memo in front of me, 4,450 for maximum square footage. If someone were to choose to just build a, one house on this lot, so they remove the existing house, don't subdivide the property, the McMansion policy would not apply because there's not a variance that's being requested. So, essentially, someone could build a home so long as they meet setbacks from all of the property lines and provide adequate stormwater management.
So, I'm sorry, can I? Yeah, just following up on that. So, assuming that they, you know, there's no limit to the size as long as they are observing setbacks and don't require any other variances. It could be 10,000 square feet or whatever they want it to be.
Okay, correct. Thank you.
Other questions, council? I'm not seeing any right now. I've got a couple. If you go back to the prior slide that, with the layout, could you provide an explanation on how, what the process is? And this, maybe Mr. Nielsen's going to have to weigh in. The legal process whereby these additional right-of-ways are required and acquired by either the city or the county. What, you know, what's that process? Because the, this is, because this appears to have been, and correct me if I'm wrong, requested or required because of redevelopment. And had, had there been no redevelopment, would these right-of-ways have been requested or required? And then what, what is the process? Is there, is that just part of the application process where you have to agree to the appropriate right-of-way that is in code now? Or I just, I'd like, for the benefit of our other councilmembers, just a little clarity on that, for me too, so.
I'll, I'll start, Mayor Weersum, and then the city attorney and public works director may want to jump in.
And I apologize, I didn't give anyone a heads up that I was going to ask this question. So, my apologies for that. And this isn't introduc, no, this is not an introduction. So, yeah, please do the best you can. Thank you.
Mayor Weersum, when a development proposal comes before city staff, it is reviewed by the city's development team, which includes members of pretty much every department and division here on city staff. When a subdivision is proposed on a county road, we also route that application to county engineering staff so they can review that. When our groups note that there is deficient right-of-way, a subdivision gives the city the opportunity to have that right-of-way dedicated. Essentially, the applicant is requesting something from the city, the city is therefore requiring the dedication of, of rights-of-way. If the subdivision was not approved and say Chastick Way was upgraded in the future, which I don't believe there are any plans for at this time, but were upgraded in the future and the city needed that right-of-way, at that time, we would have to compensate the property owner for what is called a taking of that, that right-of-way.
Thank you. Mr. Manchester, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Ms. Thomas covered it well.
Great, very good. Well, thank, thank you for that. That was, that was helpful to me. Just a follow-up question to that. If this were a, not a lot split, and so someone was coming forward with a plan to redevelop this property, tear down the existing house and build whatever they, you know, are allowed to build, would we similarly have the rights to request that right-of-way? Or, or would we, would that have to be compensated acquisition under that circumstance?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we would not have the opportunity to take easement or right-of-way, but Mr. Nielsen can correct me if I'm wrong.
He, he just gave a nod. I'm, I'm going to take that as affirmative.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Thomas is correct that in that instance, the city would have to negotiate the acquisition, which could be an arms-length negotiation or, or through eminent domain.
Great, very good. So, I mean, just to conclude that line of questioning and thought then, so essentially, I mean, the variance creates the opportunity for the city and essentially the, the right-of-way opportunity for the city is kind of a quid pro quo. I mean, you're asking for something from the city, the city is going to, in return, the, the right-of-way is granted to the city. Is that a fair way of saying it? Maybe not quite legally, legalese is not quite right, but is that essential what we're dealing with?
Yeah, Mayor Weersum, I would just clarify that it's the subdivision that allows us to acquire the right-of-way.
The subdivision, not, not the variance.
Not the variance, correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Foster Bolton?
Sorry about that. Can you go back to the lot, this one? So, math is hard. So, when we're talking, and from my calculations, where lot one is like 1,600 square feet short and pretty much the same, so we're talking 1,600 square feet.
I would agree, Councilmember Foster Bolton, per, per lot.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, mayor.
Any other questions? All right, so I think we want to hear from the applicant. And so, if you'd like to come forward and tell us what your plans are, I think we've asked quite a few questions of staff, but go ahead. Welcome, please provide your name and address.
Emily Wentz, 5328 Spring Lane.
What lane?
Spring Lane.
Spring Lane, okay, thank you.
High school.
And Jessie Wentz. So, thanks everybody for your time. So, I guess first of all, an introduction. I'm a small builder in Minnetaka. I've lived here for almost 15 years now. Officially, on my own, I used to do this like as a part-time gig off the side of my desk in the corporate world. And as of a week ago, this is my job. So, just a little backstory there. So, my goal is to build homes that are high craftsmanship, highly efficient, sustainable, all of those sorts of things. We always do spray foam, create an airtight envelope, we pre-wire for solar panels where possible, do conduit where possible to help with that, use high efficiency heating, cooling units, where it's furnaces, heat pumps, that sort of thing. Wire for EV usage in the garage to make sure that we're ready for, for the next thing that's coming down the road. Our goal is to leave the neighborhood as better than where we were when we started. So, that's kind of our introduction. So, with that said, I might be misconstruing some things and maybe saying them incorrectly, but I apologize if I do, I'm, I'm going to do my best. So, my understanding is that there's three items that we need to be able to approve a variance. The first one is, is the intended use reasonable? I, I think we all agree that having two homes there is reasonable, that, that is there. The next one is, is there something unique that is not self-imposed here? So, I'll try to make this story short and as concise as possible. But when we originally bought this home or this property, we had intended to work with the neighbor to the south to add the amount of square footage that would put us over one acre, that would then allow us to split the lot. In doing so, we were working with our survey crew. He reached out to the county and we were notified of the right-of-way being taken away. And so, to me, we kind of just took that off the table. We, why jump through one hoop to make it over an acre, over two half-acre lots, to immediately bring it back down below? Because we could only feasibly get seven, 800 square feet from him. And so, that, that's kind of how that all played out. So, that, that's the unique constraints there. The, the next thing that we have is, do we fit in the neighborhood? Could we go to the next slide, please? So, I think the big thing from my perspective is that there's a difference in what the neighborhood is between how I would calculate it and how staff calculated it. They had went 1,000 feet up County Road 4 and 1,000 feet south of County Road 4. And no, no knock on the houses on County Road 4, but they're on a county road. They're built differently than a neighborhood that is off the beaten path and on a side street. So, this in my mind is our neighborhood. With that said, I did, did some calculations here. One is the approximate 400 square feet, or 400 feet from our property. And if you calculate those out, there are 23 lots there. Those lots were Those lots were, sorry, I confused some numbers, so let me back up. Overall, this whole sheet, we've got 30 lots there. 11 of those lots are conforming. That is 63.3% are non-conforming, per my calculation. And then if you don't count any of the properties that are on County Road 4 and the flag lot to the north, that's 1.9 acre, 0.9 acres, there's 23 lots and six of those are conforming. So, when you drive down the street, it really, and when you drive down Glendale and you drive down Chastick, I truly believe we would fit the neighborhood. And then on top of that, and again, I don't know that this really matters, but I did extensive research at the county's recording office over the last week. It was a lot of fun. Learned a lot about the neighborhood, but all of the lots to the far west on Glendale, starting with the .39, .37, .38, all of those were built and split in '78. Moving east, the 2 to the east that are .42 acres were built and split in '72 off of the lot, that's .61 acres. And then the house directly to the north of us, that's .43 acres, was built and split in 1973. So, not that a wrong makes a right, or however you want to say it, but to me, those are some contributing factors to our story. Next slide, please. And then in conjunction with all that, going back to the frontage, really the two lots to the north of us are the only ones that have a comparable frontage. Otherwise, we're bigger than every other lot in the neighborhood. You walk down the street, you won't be able to tell the difference. So, that, to me, that isn't altering the character of the neighborhood. So, next slide, please. So, the picture in the bottom left is a rendering of the home that we're planning to build on the west side if we're approved. The pictures on the east are actually our home on Spring Lane. Very similar home that we would plan to build on the other lot eventually. But again, we're not looking to build big flashy homes. We're looking to build quality, sustainable, efficient homes. Next slide, please. So, as Susan mentioned, we essentially meet every code other than the actual square footage of the lot. We're 325 square feet per lot short prior to the right-of-way being taken. I don't know what the right word to say there, but we're 1.5% off. So, with all that said, any questions?
Council questions for the applicant? Councilmember Foster-Bolton?
So, the addendum, the McMansion policy addendum, was that your idea?
It wasn't our idea, but it was in the original report that we would meet it. And so I just threw it in here that we were, you know, we know we're not going to be anywhere near it. We're looking to build homes that fit the neighborhood, so.
Other questions, Council? I think you're, oh, Councilwoman Maylie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, we discussed a few things when I was out on site taking a look at it last week, and you, you know, I was impressed or, you know, kind of heartened by the fact that you said you were doing a lot of high-efficiency building and, you know, doing that in some of the other builds that you're doing. And I know I can't base my decision on that here, but I would love to know kind of what your plans would be. The problem is, obviously, you know, we approved this, and there's, I'm not sure there's any way that we can condition it on it, but I'd be, you know, really like to hear what you would, what you would plan to do, because you spoke about a few things in terms of EV readiness, you know, high efficiency, things like that. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, right now, the house to the west, our plans are done. And those plans include spray foam, closed cell spray foam insulation, so the envelope will be tight. We're going to do high-efficiency furnace, like 98, or 96% efficient furnace, high-sear AC units. We will wire the EV chargers to the garage so that they're ready for it. And depending on the buyer, we'll likely just put conduit to the roof for solar and leave that as an option.
Okay, so it'd be solar-ready?
It'd be solar-ready, yep.
Okay, and?
And little E-windows, like Energy Star windows.
Okay, that's good, good to know. And just getting really wonky and geeky here, what's your R-value that you usually put in?
So, I normally do four inches of closed cell, which is seven, R7 per inch, so approximately 28, give or take. So it's significantly more than minimum code.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe in minimum code.
Thank you, neither do I. Thank you for that.
Other questions, Council? All right, well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so I guess it's our turn. Mr. Funk?
Just by way of process, Mayor, maybe just to confirm with Ms. Wischnack, is there comments from the neighborhood or the public?
Thank you for that, yep. If there, go ahead, Ms. Wischnack.
No, there is information in your packet, but you should probably ask if there are.
Right, okay. Is there anyone from the neighborhood who has an opinion on this and would like to come and share your opinion? Yes, please. Come forward, state your name and address. Mr. Funk, thank you. Keep me honest there, that's good. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks, my name is Joe Fraser. We live at 4013 Baker Road, but we are also part-owner with our daughter of a neighboring house on Chastick Way to this potential development. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments for consideration. We know that one of the, kind of, like a burden of proving, we really do believe this is, you know, Section B of the variance standard, putting two homes in where there is one now obviously would be for economic considerations. So, we didn't feel that that met that section of it. We also do have concerns about a variance in getting away from standards that are being set up. I know there's examples that have been stated of lots that have been broken down before, but those, the ones that have been mentioned here seem to be pretty ancient history. And so, setting a standard going forward, we would just like to make sure that everything would be stuck to codes and what has been written in there. So I guess if we have any concerns about, it could change the neighborhood. Obviously, when you're in the neighborhood, you, and you're used to it, you like to keep it that way. Most people do feel that way. And I know that progress and everything goes on like that, but just to make a comment for the people in the neighborhood right now, it could create undue burdens going forward or changing things negatively to what is currently in the neighborhood. And so that's really the comments I'd like to make.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it. Is there, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Don't be shy. All right, thank you. Well, I'll bring it back to the Council. Councilwoman Maylie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, based on that comment, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding, again, from staff, the difference in housing size limit, the square footage that could be put in if a single, if we weren't to go forward and did not allow this subdivision, it could be an 8,000-square-foot house, and there's nothing we could do about it. So it could be as big as somebody wanted it to, whereas if we subdivided it, it would be, you know, upper limit of 4,000 square feet. Is that correct? Can you just?
Mayor Weersum and councilmembers, that is correct. I'm going to try to draw my mouse here. I'm not sure if you can see this, my cursor, but this outlines the setbacks or the buildable area of this property as one lot. So essentially, you're correct. There would not be a limit so long as the setback requirements were met.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
All right, Council. Comes back to us. What are your thoughts on this proposal? As the chart indicated, it requires four votes to deny, because that is a staff recommendation, and it would require five votes, supermajority, five votes to approve. Is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct, and that's based on the variance. Variances always require five votes, correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm getting the right numbers right and the wrong reasons, so pardon me for that. Yes, you may.
All right, I know this has been addressed, like, multiple times already, but when we're talking about the right-of-way, I get that engineering has said we need more. Why? Why do we need more right-of-way and what, yeah, why?
Mayor Weersum and Councilmember Wilburn, I think this diagram is the best, and hopefully you can see. The right-of-way for Chastick Way is very narrow in this location, and it's much wider in the location to the south. And so when there is an opportunity to create a more typical right-of-way section, as there is during the subdivision, the city likes to take that opportunity to create a better situation for future projects. As I indicated, I don't know that we have a future project, like, for instance, in the CIP for Chastick Way, but this subdivision puts us in a better position for a future project down the road.
So, like, just theoretically, if they needed access for sewer or utilities or something along that line?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Foster, or comments? Comments, we're good for comments.
So, yeah, I went out there too and drove around and talked to the owners. And from what I saw, there were, I mean, like, there's going to be trees that are saved. And so, standing in the middle of the yard, I was looking, and I didn't see a lot of, like, from the view from the street. I thought, well, some of the trees would cover up the houses. So it's not like it would be, when we talk about out of character of the neighborhood, it seemed like driving around, there was, you know, the houses were all pretty regular-sized. I mean, there were no mammoth houses. And there were trees in the yards sort of blocking the houses. So in terms of, like, and I don't think I'm explaining myself that well, but when you're driving around, to me, if I was driving around that neighborhood and I saw a mammoth house on this one property, and then drove around the neighborhood, that seemed, would seem to me to be out of character with the neighborhood. And so I tend to support the subdivision because the houses are smaller, and driving around, that's what I saw in the neighborhood. And that, when I think about these mammoth houses that are built, there's like these really big lawns, and all you see are the houses. There are no trees, and that wasn't my perspective when I was out there. So I, you know, I'm not good at lot sizes and stuff. It just didn't seem like the buildable area was too small to me. Didn't, but, you know, I don't, I don't do the calculations in my head very well, so it just was kind of the smell test, sort of, for me.
Councilmember Shack?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think, for me, I always struggle with a situation where, you know, what, we've got zoning code, and we have it for a reason. We also have pretty aspirational goals about infill and maybe making slightly more efficient use of property. You know, this is a situation where I think we could really, I think, honor the character of the neighborhood by really having these smaller homes. I mean, I look at some of the homes that are going in, in my neighborhood, that are so big and would really be stark on this lot. And we, and there's nothing, you know, somebody could sell this lot or these developers and put one of those 8,000, 9,000-square-foot homes on there, no problem. And that would, to me, as Councilmember Foster-Bolton indicated, not be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So I do think, and I respect staff, and I know this was a function of staff probably kicking the policymaking decision to the council, and I really appreciate that. I respect the recommendation, but I think we're so close here without asking for floodplain variances or wetland encroachment or variance of the tree ordinance or any of these other things that we see in some of these other applications that make it harder to make this decision. This also combined with the full frontage. I mean, really, the right, the frontage for this house has a lot of frontage, but I think that makes the lot feel even probably bigger. So I'm supportive of this. I also see on the horizon that we do have some changes coming, and I don't want that to be a reason for us to just spend the next year and a half making willy-nilly, granting willy-nilly variances, but I think this checks enough of the boxes and really fulfills our goals under the comp plan and just under our, even our mission and vision statement. So, I came in here really not knowing where I was going to land, but I think I support granting the application.
Other comments? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still really conflicted in reading the supplemental background report, and, you know, once again, you know, not, not having a full commission to make a recommendation was, it's just really disappointing. This is one of those times when it would be really great to have seven votes, so it would have gone one way or another. But I think that they were conflicted because they were dealing with the rules that we have. In reading page three about the commission recommendation, it said the minimal lot variance request less than 400 square feet are circumstance unique to the property, but it's 1,600 square feet, which is much bigger than the footprint of my house, just of my whole house. So, it's a big variance. And on the other hand, some of the practical difficulty is created by the, by the right-of-way. And it would have been closer to the 400, and that is, in many ways, a public benefit. So, and I just, I don't really like the way it looks on the image that's on our screen right now with the houses so close together. I don't think that they would like to be that close to their neighbor when there's that much property around. But, and the other thing is, I don't know, I know that, I think it's on the north side, there's kind of a forest buffer between the house and then some of the neighboring houses, but I also know that on several sides of this house, it's going to feel really bare because there are trees that are going to come down, and there are trees that are going to need to come down because they're not healthy. And then there's basically a thick thicket of buckthorn around at least three sides. So I think the neighbors will feel like that property is all of a sudden a little bit naked. And so I'm really conflicted because I think some of the, I think some of the tree buffer actually will go away.
The buckthorn buffer.
The buckthorn buffer, but also, but also the trees, because there just really are a lot of trees that just don't look like they're going to make it. So personally, I feel uncomfortable either way because I do feel like we are rewriting the code to try to figure out. the code to try to figure out, you know, how to use the remaining developable land in our community, but it hasn't been done yet. So I kind of feel like we're jumping the gun if we approve, and if we don't approve, I feel like the concerns that my fellow councilmembers made about having some 10,000-square-foot house is something that would be actually likely, and I think that is not the highest and best use. I'm not sure that two of these houses are the highest and best use of that land, but that's, that's to me a better use than, than, than a literal mansion, not just a mansion. So anyway, still conflicted, but those are my thoughts. Oh, and one more thing. I actually appreciated the staff laying out the conforming properties. I think that actually is a more, people can use statistics to prove a point, no matter what point they're trying to prove, and while I appreciate the applicant and, and why he had the radius of the properties that he had, if you really look in the neighborhood at large, overwhelmingly, it's conforming properties. So, you know, I think the staff was more true to the overall neighborhood, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other comments, council? Anyone? Councilmember Wilburn.
So, more of a question again, based on Councilmember Calvert. So, like, when we, if we were to approve the preliminary plat, and it shows like the proposed locations of the houses, they could come back with a different proposal for those houses, location-wise, as long as it fits the, you know, fits within the rules? Is that correct?
Mayor Werson and Councilmember Wilburn, they could come back with a different house design, certainly in a slightly different grading pattern, but if you'll recall from a couple of meetings ago, when the council approves a preliminary plat or a final plat, we have conditions that say, and grading has to occur with substantial conformance with the previous approvals. So I would say the, the general grading area would remain the same. The tree removal would have to remain the same. Could there be tweaks to how the grading actually occurs on the house design? Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, I kind of am in agreement with, with my, my fellow councilmembers on, and I feel like I get, I'm a little hung up on the, is the, what is it, condition not of the, the homeowner's.
Creation.
Creation.
Property owner's making.
Property owner's making. Like, I kind of feel like it's not their fault that the right-of-way, you know what I mean? But also, does that count? And, and again, like, I know that we're dealing with the zoning code that we have now and the rules that we have now, so we have to make our decision based on that. But also, it's so close, even with, I mean, I know 1,600 feet is a lot, but again, that's with, per lot, but that's, a, a big chunk of that is the, the right-of-way, and then, so, I don't know. I guess that didn't really give it, but that, so that's kind of where I'm struggling with, like, is this, does it really meet the, the criteria?
All right. Councilmember Romailly.
That's, okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, I told, I very much respect staff's recommendation on here and the reasons why I, you know, struggled with this a lot the last few days, and I also went back and watched again the planning commission, and I appreciated what they were saying, is that there's, you know, kind of the rules, but the reason that we have, you know, a planning commission and also city council weighs in on these issues is to, you know, if we were going to just do that, we could just do the rules. We wouldn't need the council. We wouldn't need the planning commission to look at these human aspects and what's good for the neighborhood, and what are our community goals, regardless of what, you know, kind of the letter of the law, what is the spirit of what we're trying to do here as a community and for this neighborhood? And my concerns are, again, and I think I brought this up through my questioning, is that if we don't subdivide this, we're going to end up with something worse for this neighborhood. They can get like an 8,000, 7,000-square-foot house that would be totally out of character for the neighborhood. If you have two smaller houses, obviously, we have a housing issue here in Minnetoka. Now, these aren't going to be low-cost housing, no, but it's going to be more housing, and they're going to be more aligned with what's in the neighborhood. And while I wish we could, you know, I could somehow hold the Wentz to, you know, the high efficiency, I'm really pleased that they're going to be doing things like, you know, doing the EV charger, solar ready, all of these things. I wish we had more builders who were doing this as a matter of course in, in building. So I acknowledge and appreciate the, you know, the struggles that we're having here, but I think when we, you know, get out of our green visor, you know, looking at, you know, codes and numbers and looking at what, what we're trying to do as a community and what's good, ultimately, would probably be better for this community. For me, I have to agree with Councilmember Shack, and, and I'm going to be supporting this subdivision.
Very good. Councilmember Coakley.
I guess I'll say something. No, I was kind of leaning more so supporting it as well. I'm a little different on how I see housing. I truly believe that we need more houses in our city, even though this is not the affordable housing, because it's going to be new-built at some point, when they come for the application to build if we get approved at that time. And so I know it's different from what I normally would support for as affordable, but I also know that we need more homes and people need homes, and I know we're doing the rezoning, I know it's before that, but in my mind, I'm not a planner. I don't have all the square footage down, and even understand all the, everything that entails building a new home and a right-of-ways and all of those things, but what I do understand is that this is an opportunity to move forward with our comp plan and with our rezoning, and also to help folks live into, live in another home. So if we can do that, I'm for it. So it looks like we have several councilmembers who support it, and so I'm also in support of it, so.
Anyone else?
I'll, I'll weigh in. I've, this is not an easy one, and the, the planning commission demonstrated that. They, they were unsuccessful at passing either resolution. And, and I'm not saying that's bad, I'm saying that it speaks to how challenging this is. You know, there are some things that concern me about approving this, and there are some things that cause me to say, you know, I'm not going to speculate on what zoning changes are going to be made, because, I mean, to me, that's irrelevant. We may, the zoning changes may be 100%, 100% form and no change in substance. That's a possibility. So to, so to hang on, well, we're going to make some changes, it may be that we really reorganize our zoning code and have a lot of nice charts and make it easier to understand and not change anything. That's a very real possibility. So to, to hang my hat on changes that may or may not come, well, changes may or may not come. I'm not, there's, there's nothing definite that. I understand why staff made its recommendation, and approving this from a planning perspective is the wrong decision. From a pure planning perspective, you look at what's there, you look at the, the size of the lots that exist in the neighborhood, you look at the values of the community, and, and you say, you know what, this falls short, but I'll tell you what, I've had lots, proposed lot splits. Now, I've been around for a long time. I've seen lot splits that have fall, failed, and they were roughly between 50 and 100 feet short for both lots. I mean, you know, the, the, the lot size requirement in Minnetoka is pretty darn sacrosanct, and councils in the past have indicated no desire to compromise on that. So, you know, I, if I were on staff, I'd recommend denial. If I look at the, the reality of the fact that there are streets on three sides of this, you know, this is, in some ways, not a particularly desirable lot, and it's, you know, it, it does have some real issues. And I look at the reality that in that entire block, every lot extends from Eden Prairie Road to the street behind a chestic. Did I say that? Chestic. And so this would be the, if we approved this, this would be the first one that was subsidized, that was subdivided in that entire block. So you talk about changing the character of the neighborhood, those are the types of things that change the character of a neighborhood. So, again, I'm not a planner either, but if I look at planning principles and say, this is the driver for me, I would, I would vote to not support this. And, and I salute staff for staying true to their principles. The challenge for me is, we as a city, and we as, as cities in our region, are spending a lot of time talking about housing. And we're talking about, you know, I have fought pretty aggressively at the Capitol. Not every councilmember here agrees with me, but I fought against preempting cities' rights to make decisions for what's appropriate for their city. And, and, and I will continue that fight because I do not want the state preempting the opinions of the residents of our community. That's why we do this. We hear from our residents, and we make the best decisions we can. And I would say that if it weren't for the McMansion policy, which was also an attempt by the city, by this council, to restrict the size of houses that get built in some lots like these, because, you know, variances are common, the McMansion policy is what really could allow me to, to vote, to, to allow this subdivision. Because while not every large lot that's redeveloped is going to get an $8,000 to $10,000, or 8,000 to 10,000 square-foot house, we've, we've lived with the experience that most do. And we've also had experience as a council when we've, we've worked to restrict the cost of the housing that's being built. I mean, the typical new build in Minnetoka, Ms. Wischnack or Ms. Thomas, is over $800,000, right? The typical new build, the average new build in Minnetoka is what, $850,000, $900,000?
Yeah, without the lot, Mayor.
Without the lot, without the lot. So that's, that's the reality we're dealing with. So, and land is expensive in Minnetoka. So when you look at those two factors, you know, that, that forces you, forces a developer to build big houses, because the, the numbers don't work if they don't. And so I'd say the likelihood of us getting a bigger house than we want, if we don't allow this subdivision, is pretty darn high. Will it be 10,000, or maybe it'll only be 8,000? But, but the house will likely be $2 million plus. And while $800,000 is not affordable, I'm going to say something revolutionary, it's more affordable than 2 million. And, and, and so, you know, I think, I think staff made its recommendations for all the right reasons. But the McMansion policy, which is in, which is in an effort to limit the size of houses that are built in the property in Minnetoka, and, and hopefully make those houses somewhat more affordable, and whenever we, we don't give, develop, we, we wish for certain pricing targets, but we never get them, and the houses are always more expensive than they hope, we hope they're going to be, and I'm confident these houses are going to be more expensive than I hope they, they will be. At the end of the day, they will be smaller, and I think they'll be more consistent with the neighborhood than, than they would be if we didn't allow the subdivision. So that's a, that's a lot of mumbo jumbo to say that, you know, I think staff made a good recommendation, but I'm going to disagree with it, not based on the merits, the merits of their recommendation is there, and I support them, but the unintended consequences of sticking with that recommendation will be that we end up with something we don't want. So for that reason, just being practical, I'm going to end up supporting the subdivision. So that's my, pardon me for pontificating a bit long, but I mean, it's, this is, I mean, I spend a lot of time thinking about housing. I mean, a lot, and I care about housing, and I want Minnetoka to be as affordable as we can make it. And that's not very affordable, I hate to say. But anyway, so that's, that's my rationale. So, Councilmember Calvert.
And I just, I just want to thank all of the councilmembers that are appropriately articulating our gratitude for staff for their professionalism, because really, everything the mayor just said is very true. You made the right recommendation for the right reasons, and the rationale was spot-on, and I've been spending a lot of time talking with our residents in the last few weeks, and this is a topic. And they ask, you know, why are we even considering zoning? Why are we considering this? You know, why do we need more housing? Well, we need more housing, and I think the mayor and Councilmember Shack really articulated while some of the, what makes this decision hard, and why, even if we agree with the staff recommendation, it's not necessarily the best thing to approve it, because there are some unintended consequences that I think we all kind of know would happen.
Councilmember Foster Bolton.
I don't want to be long-winded about this, but I, I really do appreciate the staff as well. I didn't, I didn't mention it. I know, I don't think that, like, personally, you, you take it personally, because I really, in my head, I was thinking, I think I know why they recommended denial, and so I appreciate you.
All right. Could all gather together and sing kumbaya when we're done with this, but, but, so, any, any last comments or a motion? Councilmember Shack.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve the subdivision based on the resolution of approval contained within the packet.
Ms., Ms. Thomas?
With the addendum.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Shack. Councilmember Foster Bolton.
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Shack and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Romailly.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shack.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Werson.
Yes, motion carries. So, thank you for hearing us all out. Let's see, the next item is the OPUS Tax Increment Financing Special Legislation, and Ms. Wischnack, you're the expert on that one.
I am, and thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. As you know, I spent a fair amount of time at the legislature trying to get this legislation adopted. I'm happy to report, we've also had a lot of help from our local legislators getting this done. I'll explain what it is, because you all know, but perhaps the public does not know why we asked for this and what it was all about. So basically, it's about the OPUS Tax Increment District that we set up a number of years ago in 2021, and we approved it, and it's important to know, it's a renewal and renovation district. There are actually four types of TIF districts in the state. This is just one type. We have 23 parcels in the orange.
We have 23 parcels in the orange, that southwestern quadrant of Opus, are the parcels that were included at the time. And it was really in anticipation of a number of factors that were going on in Opus at the time. Because of development, there were public improvements needed, we needed more affordable housing in those projects, and some of the projects were the Town Line Apartments, the Marlowe, Elcott, and Minnetoka Station. If you remember, this is actually after the Dominion project went in, so the, can you point for me? Sorry. The Dominion project, which is just north of that orange area, was not included. They have their own separate TIF district just for that project, because there were so many units, 500 units, almost 482 at that site. So that isn't included in this TIF district, so that isn't confusing to you. So at that time, it was a 16-year term district, and it was expected to generate, and this is a big number, $194 million of tax increment. And it really was to talk about future development scenarios, and we actually did both the comp plan scenario, and then we also did even a higher level, like, what is, it depends on your perspective, best case, worst case, you know, in terms of traffic analysis and improvements that we would need, and what would happen if it was fully built out beyond even what we were thinking in the comprehensive plan. So we did all that homework in an environmental review of the entire Opus area, and that's how we came up with the numbers that needed to happen for the improvements. And so the second bullet point here, it talks about the city using the general obligation tax increment bonds to fund road improvements and repay bonds through the tax increment generated, and that was estimated to be $25 million at the time for all those projects that we had lined up. Some of the projects that have happened, think about red circle, where we put a turn lane by the Elcott, so that wasn't always the dimension that you remember, it had added a lane when that project went in. There's some trail work we're finishing, hopefully this year, cross our fingers, to connect the Elcott to Gray Stars Project, the Marlowe, and get that completed. So there's lots going on still and future projects, so. And then, if there are any tax increment dollars remaining, that still can go towards other affordable housing in the city, not just in Opus. And then finally, that last point is about each redevelopment project within the orange area on the map is reviewed independently, and then we look at financial analysis for each project as we go, and we've done that on all of the projects that I just mentioned. So the issue at hand and why we went to the legislature is there were some timing issues with when certain things have to be done. Now, if you know anything about tax increment, there are rules upon rules, and we have to be compliant, and we have to make sure that we do the things we say we're going to do in the time that we have under state law. And that was where we were running into trouble on a couple of things, the five-year rule and the six-year rule, and I'll explain what those are. Our deadline was supposed to be, the district had to expend all of those expenditures by June of 2026. So really, what this extension did is it actually put into law that that extension of the five-year rule actually went to 10 years, and then there's a six-year rule that went to 11 years. So generally, in the most simplistic way I can say this, is how we can spend the money for the projects we had identified now has a longer spend term. I think that's the easiest way to describe what the legislation says. So, and then, I'm just trying to think, there's probably nothing else on this slide. The six-year rule, the city must use 80% of the TIF generated to pay the obligations to meet the five-year rule, that kind of goes back and forth. And then it does need to have, and this is the part where a lot of people think the law just gets adopted, but in this case, when it's tax increment and there's a legislative action, you as a city council have to adopt by a majority vote to make it effective. And so that is, we had our attorney from Kootok Rock do the preparation for the resolution, so that was appropriately done, and then we have to file it with the Secretary of State. Once that's done, then it will be effective. So with that, Mayor and council members, we do recommend approval of the resolution in your packet. Sorry for the long explanation, but I think it's important, because it's a lot of money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. And so, but the long and short of it is, we are extending the TIF districts, we are not adding new TIF districts, we are not changing what the money can be spent for, projects take a long time, and this is giving us enough time to get, to honor all the commitments that we intended with the TIF district originally. Is that a fair statement?
I just revise one thing you said. You said you were extending the TIF district. We're not extending the TIF district, we're extending the timeframe
The timing.
in which you can spend the increment within
Right.
the district, yep.
Very good.
And that was confusing to a lot of legislators, and so I want to make sure that's
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be a legislator, trust me on that.
But I had to spend some time doing that, but
Thank you.
And I think that's attractive to the legislature when you don't ask for an extension. I have done that before, we did that once with Glen Lake, and that's a harder thing, because you're extending that period of non, the taxes not rolling to all those other jurisdictions, I think.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, so we didn't extend that, we're extending the time period for expenditure of the money that was already generated.
Correct.
Very good. All right. Any questions or a motion? Councilmember Wilburn?
I move we adopt the resolution approving laws of Minnesota 2025, first special session, Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 15, relating to the Opus Business Park Tax Increment Financing District.
And Councilmember Remaley?
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Remaley. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. By the way, we do have Julie Eddington on the line if we need her, but it's clear that we didn't for that one. But still, still for the EDA, she's probably going to hang in there for us, I believe. So, next item is appointments or reappointments. We have none. So the final item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Wilburn?
I move adjournment.
Is there a second? Councilmember Calvert?
A second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Wilburn, a second by Councilmember Calvert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, but we're not going away, because we do have an EDA meeting. And, give me a moment, and we will call that meeting to order. So it is still Monday, July 14, 2025. This is a meeting of the Minnetoka Economic Development Authority. I will call this meeting to order, and I will ask Ms. Larson to please call roll.
Shack?
Here.
Wilburn?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Remaley?
Here.
Coakley?
Here.
Foster Bolton?
Here.
We're some.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. Ms. Wischnack?
There are no changes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Councilor, Commissioner Calvert, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the agenda.
And a second. Commissioner Shack?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Calvert and a second by Commissioner Shack. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes, and we have one set of minutes, they are the June 9, 2025 EDA meeting minutes. And Ms. Wischnack, any comments on those? All right. No comments, they were in your packet. Is there a motion? Commissioner Calvert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the June 9, 2025 EDA minutes.
And Commissioner Remaley?
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Calvert and a second by Commissioner Remaley. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Next, the one business item we have, 5A, is the Pathways to Home Ownership Program. So, Ms. Wischnack?
Thank you, President and Commissioners. This is an action that's related to your consent agenda on your council agenda, just to make sure we have a record of what we were discussing here. Really, this is two things that you're doing with the EDA. One is you're accepting resolutions that accept the transfer of those additional funds for pathways, which is $200,000. You're using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for that expenditure. And then you have to approve a new agreement with CEE, which is the Center for Energy and Environment. They are the ones that actually put the program to, into movement, and they've been doing that since we started the program. So they need a new contractual arrangement, which is included in your packet as well. So it's two actions that you need to do to effectuate the $200,000 for the pathways program. Thank you.
And those two actions are tied in this recommended motion right here. So if we make that motion, we should be good. Commissioner Remaley?
Thank you, President. I will make the motion to adopt the resolutions accepting the transfer, oh, sorry.
No, I've just got a second.
Transfer of additional funds for the program and approving a new amendment to agreement with CEE.
Commissioner Coakley?
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Remaley and a second by Commissioner Coakley. Got a little bit of alliteration there. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Shack?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Final item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Wilburn?
I move adjournment.
Is there a second? Commissioner Calvert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Calvert and a second by Commissioner, excuse me, a motion by Commissioner Wilburn and a second by Commissioner Calvert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Well done.